Good evening. The January 5th, 2009 Troy City Council meeting is called to order. And we're pleased this evening to have with us Jeff Toden from the Troy, who is our, one of our Troy Police Department chaplains, starting off our new year correctly by doing our invocation, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Nice to have you here, Jeff.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with thankful hearts, thankful for the blessings you bestowed upon us, certainly in this community of Troy, and in our state and in our country. We pray tonight for those in harm's way in armed forces and ask for your protection upon them, comfort to families, and guidance for all that are leading those men and women. And Father, for this council, we pray that you would give them wisdom and understanding of all the issues that they'll face this coming year. We're mindful that you tell us that if we ask of you, you will grant wisdom liberally to those that desire it. And so may that be the desire of each man and woman's heart here. And Father, may 2009 be a year in which all of us walk humbly before you, and that these leaders serve you and serve the community in a humble way. We're told that if we humble ourselves before you, you lift us up in due time. So that's our desire tonight. We love you and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. May I bless you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Toden, for being here with us this evening. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Here.
Brumfield?
Here.
Eisenbacher?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howrillak?
Here.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I would move that we excuse Councilmember Howrillak for being out of the county.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, that we excuse Mayor Protown Martin Howrillak for being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. This evening, there are no certificates of recognition or carryover items or public hearings. There will be some at the next meeting, though. And so we will go right, and there are no postponed items, so we'll go right to public comment for items limited to those that are not on the agenda. And I will call on those that have signed up on the kiosk first. We did have with us Eric Buzinski from the Attorney General's Office, Mike Cox, who wished to say hello and greet us in the new year here. This is a new position for him. So if you'll come forward, please. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that hello, Council, as well. I've introduced myself briefly to a couple of you tonight. I do appreciate having me here. Again, as the mayor said, I'm a new position there at the Attorney General's Office in the southeast Michigan liaison position. If there's anything the office can ever do, anything I can ever do, please feel free to contact me. I'll be here for the first half of the meeting. I apologize I had to take off and tell another Ben Donovan Clement a little bit after this. But if there's anything we can ever do, thank you, and let us know. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. It's nice to see you again.
Thank you.
I first met Eric at the Chamber Christmas luncheon, and when he had begun his position here. Next, we have, is it Jill Gleba? G.L.E. Yes, please come forward. Did I surprise you by calling on you so fast?
So quickly, yes, you did. I was like, wow. Thanks for your time. First of all, I want to tell all of you, I appreciate the work you do for Troy. I enjoy it here. I want to take this opportunity to let you know, I've been resident of Troy since '87. I own a business in Troy. I'm also a landlord in Troy. So I play, work, spend all my time in Troy, and I'm here in behalf of the Boys and Girls Club in Troy. I'm also on their board. To me, they're a valuable resource to our community. I actually volunteered there when my kids were small, and I was at, I didn't need to use a Boys and Girls Club, and I chose to go there and volunteer with my kids because it was just a great place to be. You really don't know the impact that this club has on these kids unless you've been there. I can say that with my own experience. Also, I want to mention I was the volleyball queen there. We had a good time there. But it's well-known that between the hours of three and six, you've got petty crime, you've got vandalism, you even have kids that may want to experiment with drugs because mom and dad aren't home. So I think that the Troy Boys and Girls Club serves a purpose of safety for our community. Also, the club has a partnership and a history with the Troy Police Department. They are a gift to our community and should be fully funded in the Troy budget. Along with the fine restaurants and shopping that we have here, I must say that I often brag about the Boys and Girls Club also. So I want you all to make the choice to keep our community actually the best one in Michigan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marvin Reinhardt?
I hope everybody had a good Christmas and New Year's.
Thank you. I hope you did, too.
You know, like I said, I just spend most of my time up on the block, so I really don't know what's happening until I come, come out of my place and walk through that, you know, that trench. And also congratulate you, Clark Hill. I've been up on the Pakistan and Hindi websites advertising the fact that we're going to have lots of taxicab driver jobs coming up pretty soon with that transit center, though they don't understand why Anthrax, if Anthrax wanted a train center there, why Anthrax not going to build it. But I said that Birmingham and Troy's got some of the biggest brains, not the smartest, but some of the biggest brains of southeastern Oakland County. I'm also looking up some groups in Troy. I can't really find out who they are, but they sort of like, like I was talking to Doug Schroeder the other day, because I need papers out of your police department. And when I tried to fill out the paperwork, and they said, how much? And I said, I really don't care, you know? They said they don't have enough time to get my papers. So then I called Doug Schroeder, high school buddy of mine. My dad worked with the guy when my dad quit being a CPA. Fine reading of the numbers, though. My dad would have been proud of that. He told me it's going to cost me $500 to get that one piece of paper out of there, and I need about 30 of them. So that sort of sets my budget to what I got to do, and I really don't like what I got to do, but with that much money to spend, I guess I got to do it. And what that is, is I guess I got to replace everybody up there. Couple of you guys, my policy, only my policy, one man, and my vote really doesn't count because I've been having a problem for over a couple of years, hasn't been fixed. But anyway, getting back to this Big Beaver Corridor study you have, if you look at the pictures, it doesn't look nothing like you guys told it was going to be. Nothing. And then you guys keep referring to this thing like it's a Bible, when you're not even following it. Okay? Because I can't live in my trailer, I got to walk around and read all this stuff, and I probably read about 35 webpages about old Troy and brought back old memories. It's like I called Troy High School today because I think we'd meet a trumpeter over at the American Legion, and you know what? They got four assistant principals, and during our time, we had Capper, the old drunk they called him, because they thought he was drinking all the time. So it took four eggheads, eggheads at Troy High to replace one old drunk, and you're telling me our school system's getting better? Well, that's only three minutes, and I can talk off record to you anytime you want, but I assure you, I'll probably go home, and there's a kid next door, this mother's trying to make him take Ritalin, I'll take it. And I'll probably be up the next few days up on the blogs helping Troy be introduced to the world, because that's my mission. If you see a name out there called Troy, Michigan, which I'm going to have a radio station pretty soon up there called Troy, Michigan, that's me. Because if I can't get the snow moved from going one way, just 45 degrees, because if I look up who owns that property, because two companies own it, I already went to two companies, and I got to go to the third, I can be accused of stalking, and I don't want to be accused of stalking. Okay? So that's the reason why I got this extra time on my hands to do this. And I've told people, I do not want a parade down 16 mile. I'm telling these people, I don't want a parade, because they want Troy days to be down 16 mile, because if we can have transit merchants flip a couple dollars to our people, why can't we have transit merchants for a few days down 16 mile? And that's going to be my start of the thing. I think we should do that, because that mud bowl is a little bit too much, because if it rains, we can be in Somerset Garage having such a good old time, it don't make no difference if Somerset allows us, the normal people, to be out there. Thank you much.
To anyone else that wants to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we will go on to our regular business. And let me scroll and see if there's anyone here on those items, because we take those. Seeing none, we'll go in the order that is on the agenda. So the first item in regular business is the forwarding of names for... I'm sorry. Usually it's forwarding of the names, and then it's the vote on the appointments. Is it the other way around this time on our agenda?
The other way around.
Mrs. Bartholomew? We've got city council appointments, and then we go to the forwarding of the names?
I'm sorry, you caught me off guard on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was catching myself here. Okay. The Advisory Committee for Persons with Disability, the name was forwarded of Michael Wilson as alternate.
That is correct.
And so if someone wants to move that forward?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I would rather resolve Troy City Council hereby appoints Michael Wilson to serve on the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities. Term expires 11/1/2009.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we appoint Michael Wilson as the alternate for the unexpired term expiring 11/01/2009. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. And next, we go to nominations for boards and committees, and the first section is merril nominations. And for the Board of Review, I bring forward the name of Francis X. Cotcher Jr. for the And for the Planning Commission, the reappointment of Lon Almond for the term expiring 12/31/2011. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support.
Who, was that you, Councilwoman Kerwin? And then Councilwoman Fleming? Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin. Discussion? These are to forward the names, and then we'll vote on them at the next meeting. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. City council nominations. Do any council members have names they wish to bring forward at this time? We have several. Well, the Planning Commission rep and alternate rep, they will do in January, and then they'll send the names to us. But there are several other vacancies, and there are some that have requested reappointment.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
At this time, I would be willing to forward the name of Kent Voight for the Cable Advisory Committee, and John Lamorato for the Municipal Building Authority, and Tim Dewan for the Election Committee, since the Democratic Party has weighed in on that. Thank you. And I would, I would prefer to not do the Liquor Advisory Committee and the Traffic Committee until those terms can be straightened out. Those people serve until they're replaced, and the terms are messed up. So rather than do it incorrectly, I'd just as soon wait, if we could, and just handle those three tonight.
Right. Yes, there's a yellow memo on the table for us about that. Thank you. Do we have a second to those nominations?
I'll support it.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, that we forward the names of Kent Voight for reappointment to the Cable Advisory Committee, Timothy Dewan for the Election Committee reappointment, and John M. Lamorato for the Municipal Building Authority reappointment. Is that it, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
That's all.
Okay. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is E3, which is the 2008-2009 Budget Amendment Number Two. We have a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the 2008-2009 Budget Amendment Number Two as submitted, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
Could we have staff speak through this briefly, since it is a big sum of money?
Just... Yes, we have a report there. Did you have a specific question, or you just wanted to come over?
Not a specific. Just talk through what the items are, a little bit of why we were off.
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
I'll refer this to Mr. Lamorato.
Okay. Mr. Lamorato?
Madam Mayor, City Council. First of all, what we have before you is customary, after our audit is completed each year, we take a look at our capital projects and look to see where those finished off at June 30th. During our budget process, we have departments estimate where they think they're going to be at June 30th with these various expenditures. And this is merely, we go back and look at every line item and reconcile where they projected we were going to be at June 30th, where we actually ended up. And in a lot of these cases, a lot of these projects do span more than one year, when you have road projects and infrastructure projects and drains and so forth. So all we're doing here, there's no new projects. Anything that is here that is over $10,000 has been approved by city council already in a bid award, and all we're doing here is reconciling those items that, where we thought they'd be at June 30th, where they actually ended up, and just moving those funds over to the current year's budget. There are no new items here. There's everything that's been in the budget, it's been approved, and there are contracts in progress. It's a matter of timing and where they actually ended up expended as of June 30th.
Okay, so none of these amounts are larger than we had anticipated, it was just the timing?
Right. Just strictly a timing issue and estimate. We had, basically during the budget process in February and March, the departments try to estimate where they think they're going to end up at June 30th with these expenditures. And some of these large road projects, a lot of it's right away, most of it's right away in the road projects and so forth, you know, you'd hope you'd have some of it taken care of by June 30th, and oftentimes that goes more than, it ran past that period of time. There are no new projects. It's everything that's been approved by council over $10,000 already.
Okay.
Any other questions on these?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Isn't this a requirement of GASP, and don't all governments, local governments, have to make this kind of a budget amendment at this time of year?
Well, Madam Mayor, City Council, we are required by state law to amend our budget. When necessary, we cannot expend funds over and above the budgeted amounts, so these are expenditures that will be coming forward this current year, but we need to amend the budget to account for those.
Further questions or discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Consent agenda items, does council have any that they wish to have exempted? I see that there are none requested by members of the audience or...
Item F7, please.
F7? Okay. And any others? Okay, would you like to move the resolution then with F7, the exception?
Yes, resolved that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented with the exception of item F7, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve all the consent agenda items with the exception of F7 that will be considered after this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. And F7, Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I'm concerned about the large number of condemnations that we're having to go through on this project. I know that the city has already negotiated in good faith with the property owners and shared the information that we have for how the, how the appraisals were conducted. I'm curious if we have any flexibility in terms of time, because the market is deteriorating. The longer we wait, the less the properties are going to potentially be worth. And if cities like Phoenix or Las Vegas, I mean, obviously they had a bigger, substantially bigger bubble than most places in the country, especially the Detroit area, but they've gone down 20%, 30% in a month. Do we have any flexibility to wait on this?
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's a very good question, and the answer is no, we don't really have time to, to work on this. The, the one good side, you're absolutely right, to the downturn in the market, is that there is the possibility that we can get properties for less than we used to. That being said, the market hasn't dropped precipitously, you know, there is some value that's been gained for us. But you also have to remember at the same time that we have a law that was passed by the, by the people of the state that says that we have to pay a premium on, on these properties regardless. These properties listed in, in this particular item are just those properties that have legal counsel representing them. And as a result, we have to also request and have legal counsel available to represent us. And if it's just a question of they turn it over to their lawyers to handle it for them, then wonderful. If it's, if it's another question where it might lead to larger issues, we just want to make sure that we're prepared because of that timing question that you raised, to make sure that we can still continue this project in a timely manner. So we'd like to make the request for both, the right to legal counsel and also the right to condemn if needed.
Okay. Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
So these people haven't necessarily turned down the city's offer yet. They've got...
They haven't accepted our offer.
Okay.
Would be the best way to describe it. They have, they have legal counsel representing them, and we fully anticipate that it'll be a healthy set of negotiations. Would that be a good way to put it?
Mrs. Blum, do you have anything to add?
No, they are all represented by councils, so that is a little different. I do know that with the passage of our new law, that there aren't as many condemnation cases, and so there are more attorneys that are involved at an earlier stage.
Okay. Yeah, and I do understand that the state law gives a 25% premium, if I remember the percentage. So anyone that's selling their property gets a 25% premium, and they're getting cash money from the city, so that means they can go out and buy a substantially nicer house that doesn't front a mile road also.
Well, these aren't necessarily residential properties. It's our commercial properties, and so circumstances change a little bit.
Okay. And we pay their moving costs, I believe, right?
Yes, sir.
And this project is, this is the improvements to our history from Torpey to Barclay. When are, when are we scheduled to begin?
2010.
Any further discussion on F7? Do you want to move F7, Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
I'm satisfied that you can answer, Dwight.
Okay.
Not that satisfied.
Oh. Okay. Does somebody want to move F7?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I understand there's a philosophical difference here, so I would move approval of all sections of F7 as written.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, and a loud noise in the hall, that we approve all sections of F7. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Brumfield?
Yes.
Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Fleming? Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Got a clip here, quick. Okay. Next meeting, we do have a couple of resigning applications and a street vacation. Council referrals are none. Council comments. You guys have any items to bring forward?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Eisenbacher?
This is an item I carried forward from, from two meetings ago. We get these very detailed reports detailing building permits that have been put forth by the city, their requests, the numbers, residential, commercial. It's very informative. The one area of the Zucker, that the Zucker Report talked about, and was the reason for our fee increases, was the timing. And our report currently doesn't have a, a timing component, other than when the report was made. And I'd like to get some feedback from staff on how we can integrate time as detailed in the Zucker Report into our metrics for their reporting. Don't know if that would be, you stamp it when the... Don't know if that would be, you stamp it when the permit is requested, and then it's stamped when it's given out, give, or returned to the builder, it's approved, um, or submitted back for corrections. But some way to measure Zucker Report, um, time component.
Mayor, I've, I've addressed this with Mr. Murphy, uh, this afternoon. And we're going to come up with some kind of a, a metric as to how we can report uh, when the permit was pulled and when it was granted, and when, uh, if there's any other logistics that are involved.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to bring up two items that are in the, um, reports. That is the financial summary, uh, report, uh, very well done. This is usually part of our calendar, but we're not doing the calendar this year. And I'd like to ask about how people might, uh, get these. Uh, will they be at, will there be copies of this, uh, available? If, if there's some folks that need to have this, Mr. Lamorato?
Uh, Mayor and City Council, we plan on doing in the next week or so is, uh, what we are going to be getting with the Troy Times, and will be an insert in their paper, so it'll go to every household.
Oh, that's good. And good use, because I'm sure they're giving a good price for that. It, uh, I think that it's, uh, it's very well done, uh, giving the, you know, the information, but also is, is colorful and attractive, so it'll catch people's attention. And, uh, so I appreciate that. Uh, and the data that's in there for, uh, the year ending June 30th. And the other is a lengthy report, uh, from Mr. Nelson and, uh, to Mr. Nelson from Brian Murphy regarding, uh, climate communities and the, uh, projects that we're going to submit for the, uh, federal stimulus project, project package. And there are some, of course, that are listed in here that are absolutely crucial to us. For example, the Transit Center. And others, which of course will help us in that area. Uh, I especially like the Residential Rain Barrel program and wanted to hopefully let that we go through so that, uh, I could personally be doing that. And also the Ameralakes Stormwater System Improvement. Those were just ones that caught my eye. So, uh, they're not going to choose all of these, certainly, Mr. Murphy. In all the cities, how many cities are going to be submitting a list like this? That's my question.
All of the smart ones are, uh, putting together their list, I suppose, would be the right way to answer that question, Mayor. Um, and, and thank you. Yeah, certainly, there are projects on here that, um, that are creative. Um, the, the Rain Barrel Program being one of those creative ones, uh, and some Stream Bank Erosion Programs that are, uh, on our list of things that we'd like to get done if and when the money finally becomes available. Um, and I think you'll find that if you listen to any of the reports on CNN and the like, they of course pick out some of those rather obscure ones. The, uh, I think somebody mentioned that there was a pool in, um, Hawaii that wanted to get heated. You know, you just kind of wonder about that. Of course, they're probably saying the same thing about why we want a Zamboni for our ice rinks up here in the north. Uh, so, you know, it all depends on, on your view of things. But all of them, um, certainly include some very necessary projects. And some of them include some very creative, uh, projects as well. Uh, and, and that creativity sometimes can actually help spur on your economy and add to a certain community value and add to a certain community character. Uh, I point to the, um, the bridges along, um, the highway in, in Connecticut, where each city got to choose exactly how their bridge was going to look when the WPA came through. And they're absolutely gorgeous pieces of harps in their communities as you go through on that particular highway. So there, there is a community value that can be tied into it as well. And so we tried to be creative when we came up with the list, knowing full well that not all of them will be chosen, and, and if we're lucky, we're lucky.
Do we have any timeline of when we might hear, when some of these might be chosen?
Well, we're, we're on as many lists as we could place these on. And we've shared them as well with our, um, newly elected congressman, uh, and also with our senators, and with the Michigan Municipal League, and, and, and all of our other partners that we have, the, uh, as you mentioned, the ICLEA, and, uh, and the like. So we're, we're looking at all the different places where we can find. There haven't been any official announcements on how this money, if this money even exists, is going to be, uh, parsed out. There are a lot of ifs and whats, but, um, the best thing to do is just be prepared with the lists, uh, as we can.
Yes, and that's true, you know, with, with grants. You know, if you don't get on the list, uh, you know, there are sometimes monies available for at least part of the projects. Uh, and, uh, so I think it's a good idea. But it was a very complete report. I appreciated, uh, getting it and, and seeing that we're pursuing that.
I, I do want to say thank you to the staff that helped me put it together. They did all the heavy lifting. I just got to put my name on the report. So thanks to the Engineering Department and, uh, Community Affairs and Mary Redden in our office for helping me put the list together.
Good. The team effort is always, uh, an important thing. Did anybody else want to comment on either, uh, J2 or J7?
Uh, Mayor, if I could point out...
Mr. Nelson?
Just got a, a report from ICMA that six states have submitted some of their requests, and they total 136 billion, just those six states, so... So there is a, uh, it's going to be a real run for the money, so, so to speak.
And they're all falling under the cat, this same category?
Shovel ready, is what they're saying.
Uh, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Shovel ready is what we want to be all about, too. And, um, I just wanted to inquire about the phrase "jobs created." I'm wondering, uh, when, uh, when those jobs are itemized on each different project, uh, would those be bid out? Would they be open to our citizens here in Troy? Would that be something we've talked a lot about, retirees coming back in? I'm wondering if we will, um, approach some of those opportunities in a creative fashion.
Um, the first point you bring out is very key, and that is that these are, uh, jobs-ready projects. These are projects that are on the shelves right now. This doesn't include all, everything that we have, and you can probably pick out a couple of other projects that would have been nice to have been included. But these are things that can happen right away. And that's exactly what, um, we've heard on our messages, that that's what they want to have. As far as the jobs-created, uh, component, that really are the construction jobs that are created for that particular project. Uh, these, these really, uh, for the most part are not long-term extended life, uh, jobs. Uh, but again, if you take a look back at the history of, uh, some of the other, uh, programs and projects that have been done, uh, under similar circumstances, they, they tend to be construction jobs. Um, could we use, uh, alternative, uh, forms to get them caught and get these done? Entirely a possibility. Um, once we know exactly what we're being looked for, we can explore that.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Particularly on, on some of the innovative greenways, Rain Barrel, some of the modeling that I know that you've, uh, that Assistant Man, uh, City Manager Murphy has particularly talked about in terms of going green and setting an example for that. I imagine that's a way we could involve a number of different organizations, even if the money isn't printed and flowing our way. But some of those projects that have, uh, been, uh, iterated in the memo probably could be done, uh, very well.
Okay, any other items? No? Well, I told someone I thought we'd be done by eight o'clock. I missed it by seven minutes, so, uh, we're in a... But our next...